But if you're wanting to, yes. Please bring in the president. Give me attention, everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. Welcome to our, uh, city of people committee, city council meeting. Here, if you call the whole place. Council Harmon, here. Council Watkins is still online, she's live. Um, Council Redd, here. Council Sovereign, here. Mayor Short, here. Council Paulin, here. And Council Bees, now according. Oh, thank you. Uh, we're gonna have one change of, uh, venue here, the fleet of flowers is just to present their request, and I'm gonna do that right after, right now? Hi Kathy. Hey, everyone. Would you make sure that button, uh, you?
It's on. I turned it on.
Is it on? I can't tell if it's green or not. Okay.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having me today, and thank you for letting us speak early because we do have a big event tomorrow.
I know.
I'm excited to hope to see y'all there.
Wonderful.
So, I have two things that I'd like to talk about today, and then after I'm done speaking, Jerry Springer would like to address the council as well. So, I'd like to first start off with what I would like the city to help us with during the fleet of flowers, which I sent you all, which would be to have ready for you the stage down, and then the garbage bags, I mean the garbage cans, the black ones. And I think that's basically what you guys help us with, and of course, you know, coming down and helping us, you know, volunteer and things like that. The second thing that I'd like to speak about, and you and I spoke about it, is because it is the eighth year for the fleet of flowers, we decided that we'd like to have a concert down at the docks on Sunday night to celebrate, to have it be, uh,
Celebratory.
Yes, and to have it be a friend, a family-friendly event. It would start around four o'clock. We would have two bands. The fleet of flowers is going to pay for that, but what we would like, and Kathy said that, um, she was in agreeance with us.
Yeah.
But Ken said that I needed to ask her permission for that. Is that true?
Yep, absolutely. If anything that happens to the city has to come from the whole council.
Okay, perfect, so.
Wonderful.
Alright, so I would like to, you know, know if that's something that the city would be interested in. And then, of course, having you guys come down, and, um, we'd like Kathy to come and speak and talk about our harbor, what's happening with it, and that it's, you know, a great place for us all to be and to celebrate maybe years of a tradition that makes our community what it is.
Okay.
And, yeah, one more thing though, before I'm done, please, thank you. Um, what would we need from the city, and Jerry will speak on that, is maybe some traffic control. I have contacted the insurance that we carry under the fleet of flowers, and there is an umbrella that would cover the, um, anything that should happen during that, um, celebration. There will, there will be no alcohol, and we're just asking people to come and enjoy it, and if they want to bring their own food, bring it.
Unfortunately, we don't have any traffic control, and we normally do.
Well, Jerry seems to be on that.
Oh, okay.
On what his ideas.
Oh, perfect.
Yes.
Good, okay, cool.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have questions. So they, but the concert's gonna be at the park.
Where's it gonna be?
At the dock. So where you showed on our map, what was, um,
That's probably Jerry's.
The park place, you know, parking, is that where the?
The concert is going to be on the stage that is placed for the fleet of flowers. We are having chairs delivered that will be placed in front of that, so that people can either, you know, move them out, but we'll have plenty of chairs because we have not had enough chairs for people that have come to the fleet of flowers, for elderly, people that can't stand for a long time. So, we decided to have a committee that we would have chairs delivered that would be set up, picked up, and taken away.
So, so what, what, I don't understand, where the parking, you know, parking will be for the people, like, using the docks?
Well, you, I have spoken with Eva, and usually everything's done by about four o'clock on that Sunday anyway, because the next day is the fleet of flowers. We walk off the road so that we can have room for the fire truck to get down there and for, uh, handicap parking. So most of our boats are in by then, so then, uh, the parking should be, you know, able to go.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Does this event bring tourists in?
You know it.
Well, I have, I have a further question. I think since the last time, at last, at the last meeting, I sort of lectured on how we have to spend our money now, uh, on tourist-oriented projects. And here I note that you've filed an application agreement, a rental agreement, and you're paying the city $240?
No, she's not paying anything.
Not paying anything?
The only thing that I have, I gave the city a check, and that is to ensure that we will leave the property as we receive it.
It's a deposit.
It's a deposit. She waived the fees.
Well, my outrage is misplaced.
Thank you. I know, for y'all, huh?
Well, she doesn't do anything to cancel the process.
Uh, Harmon, let me clarify that, Council Redd, she didn't waive the fees. The policy is not to, so once we realized the fees were being charged, the fees were waived against your policy. It was not waived.
What I wanted to ask or clarify that, um, the mayor doesn't get to say anything. It has to be the city council.
That's why they're here. Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I mean, this is new for all of us, you know, for me, I'm not, you know, knowledgeable on how this all works. And Kathy and I have spoke about that, and she said, "Of course, it sounds lovely. I would love to have that celebration go on for, you know, Sunday until Monday. It keeps people in our city longer, they go to the restaurant after. It's a win-win for everybody." And so, when I spoke to Kim, because this is a new thing, we've never had a concert before there, she said, "No, you need to come before council," so I scheduled myself. Any other questions about the concert, or fleet of flowers, or?
Do you want to have Jerry come up?
Let's take a vote. We get to decide.
We will vote on the whole operation.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Jerry Springer. I'm a volunteer for the fleet of flowers, and they asked me to quick, I guess, or, what's that?
He's our new board.
Oh, yeah, I'm on the board of the fleet of flowers.
Oh, nice.
Um, so they asked me to kind of, actually, we had an issue with, uh, parking cars parked when we were having the more, more of the event. People that were out on charters that were still lingering around when we're trying to set up the chairs. So they said, "Well, maybe we can pop an idea to prevent that from happening." Um, the 9:00 AM on Sunday was just taking staff at, at the time. We don't have to obviously do that at 9:00 AM in order to close it down, but we'd like to have, basically, that area closed off, with the exception of the businesses that, the people that work down there. And, um, Coast Guard, of course, would be exempt, the one, the disabled area for disabled parking. Um, but have the charter, uh, customers use the boat launch area or the area by the, across from the community center. So that was kind of our idea. So, this is more proposal than, than saying this is what we're doing, you know, so kind of our idea. If, if the city would allow us to, you know, shut it down, what requirements would we need to notify people that, hey, we're gonna close the harbor this time? We need that information.
And I just wanna protect the charter folks. Are you saying that you're gonna tell the charter companies, that you want us to tell them that they can't load and unload everything?
No, I don't know. Who's supposed to say?
Well, see, are the charter companies on board with this? Because,
I don't know.
Um, is Drake Draymond's on board with this? I'm concerned that, we don't, we don't really have the authority. We can tell them we're gonna do this, but we, it's not one of those things I would like to do, is tell the charter companies they cannot, that they have to go to the boat launch with their big boats to, to unload people. So, maybe that's something that could be, like, discussed.
Well, no, they, the people would park there and then walk. They could still walk and get on the charter boats. It's just where they're parked.
Oh, you want, okay, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, no, we want the charter boats to go.
So I, I heard load and unload at the boat launch. You'd be parked at the boat launch.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I.
Okay, I was like, I don't know how these big charter companies are gonna get their boats over there.
We're basically asking, well,
That makes more sense, thank you.
We're, we're advising them. This is kind of what we wanna do, and we need to approach all the charter companies and see if they're on board. We're sure happy to do it. I think, you know, they're a big part of the fleet of flowers already, so, um, they don't want that.
Sure.
The Newport rentals was high enough to offer us a real good deal on bringing chairs in, so we don't have to haul chairs from here over there. We could have a lot more chairs than we add, and so they'll be dropping them off and picking them up. But we're gonna coordinate with them as well, um, on, on the timing of that, so.
May I ask one more clarifying question, and it's simply, I forgot to ask, is why, how will you guys be having the bands go to?
So the first one will start at four o'clock, play at 4:30. The main band, which is gonna be Johnny Wills and, uh, the Swamp Donkeys, um, they'll start around 4:30, play till 6:30.
Oh, okay, so we're not wanting a foul of any kind of voice-warding or anything like that.
It's just that, that's all I wanted to just, because you would leave by Sunday afternoon, we're done with the fleet of flowers.
And if we have, if the whole area is kind of walked off the parking, we can leave, basically, unless the weather's bad, leave everything set up for the next morning, for the actual event on Sunday, so it's kind of our plan anyway, so.
Thank you.
They took five minutes and, and, and copied a Google image and did this parking plan, so, you know, they did that all the time.
Okay, I suggestion, I think that if you shut parking up down between 2:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon, there won't be a problem with parking for charters or any other harbor users. Uh, most people aren't cleared out by that kind of thing, so. That's, I think, I think 9:00 AM is a little early, 'cause boats will still be out, but I think if you do it at 2:00 to 3:00, then you're gonna have, there won't be any issues.
Yeah, perfect, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we need to have a, uh, motion to accept the, um, proposals from the fleet of flowers for their uses?
Because what I just heard is that, it says 9:00 AM on Sunday.
Oh.
We, that was just taking a stab at the time, you know.
And she had a great idea, 3:00.
Yeah, yeah, 3:00, sure.
If you change it to 3:00 on Sunday.
Okay. Um, is there a motion?
Our motion with the changes.
Okay, with the changes, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second to accept, um, the fleet of flowers' proposed, um, celebration, uh, coming up for the royalty. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, let's get to going.
Thank you.
And that's on, and that's on the concert as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Take care of your proposal.
Thank you so much, and thank you for letting us go early, and we appreciate it, and we hope to see y'all at the fundraiser tomorrow.
Yeah, there's a lot of good stuff inside an auction, and the fish brought eyes, the fish and chips are always good.
Those are the best.
We're gonna go set everything up right now.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, will they consent agenda now? Um, we have our minutes from February 4th, and the council table. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda just presently?
Like a motion?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second to accept the consent agenda. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, Council Watson, I do need you to vote. You can do it by typing in chat, raising your hand, or otherwise, so we make sure that you're still present.
Yes, I voted in the last, and then I'm voting yes on this one as well.
I missed you on that. Bye, Paula.
I, I did want to clarify the P, central PUD bills. I pulled them, so, because when I was reviewing, because, hey, guys, I got another huge stack, and I thought we'd just pay these guys. So, they're, because of some internal controls as far as saplings are printed and processed, I, I'm worried we're gonna don't pay, so I pulled those. So that's one of them.
But they're in our consent?
Right, because she doesn't know I pulled it, so I pulled them. They're just not gonna go out. If everything's okay, they'll go out. Um, but if everything's not okay, she'll void them.
So should we let that note?
Um, we just did by doing this.
Okay, so, by doing what?
Which is why I wanted to bring it up, because I meant to bring it up in front of those, but, oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we have any guest presentations. Okay, we'll have our committee and commission reports. Um, emergency preparedness committee, they are going to be doing a, on March 22nd, Saturday, from 10 till 1, a demonstration of, uh, from dugami charts of what are tsunami, um,
In the invasion assets?
Yeah, the inundation, those up here in, in depot bay. And then they're also going to be promoting, um, I don't know, then if you went to the, uh, there was an emergency power rally, and we've got these, um, rolling carts, and they're wonderful, and so they're gonna be demonstrating those and putting out a program, uh, and trying to get support from the city on, uh, putting these throughout the city. What they are is the rolling carts. They're filled to the brim with enough supplies for 20 people for three days. There's food and water and shelter and all kinds of goodies in these rolling carts. And so, we're hoping that we've identified five different, um, we're calling them islands here in the city, and they have, um, we've identified to put two of these carts, because what's gonna happen is, um, the people with the carts would open up these carts and allow people to be using them from their, uh, from their homes and facilities. So, it's a program that we're very excited about because it's immediate needs met, uh, for a lot of our, not only homeowners that are not prepared, that we're hoping will be prepared, uh, but for many guests, so. So put that on your agendas, because it's, it'll be, but, uh, hot dogs and hamburgers, of course, served, and it'll be at the community center. Jack, and Liz, did you have something on the harbor?
Hi, my name's Liz Martin, and I graciously served on the harbor commission for probably seven or eight years. And for a lot of time, and I worked tirelessly with, uh, O'Brien, and we had done our best job that we can. And I want everyone to know that, um, I have no business ties with the harbor. And again, that's because I'm passionate about the harbor and I'm passionate about people there. So I just wanted to make that very clear, concrete through the, uh, log session. So, um, my report would be that, um, we really celebrated a big thing on Saturday with those new docks. And I have a lot of pride, put a lot of hours, a lot of time into it. I do, again, I love the people that I work with. We all joined together to make it happen. And having, um, the senators and representatives there to celebrate was awesome. I wanna thank the city for our wonderful fleet, as in, uh, it's a so-called fleet, and it was, uh, the old fleet, the old docks, putting part of, part of the docks, you know? Um, and it was beautiful, and something that I'll always cherish, and I know that everybody that received it really thought it was cool. So, anyway, all of you that got to come and witness those new docks, yeah, it's gonna be a long time till we can ever afford to have those docks again. And that, those docks weren't raised on user fees. They weren't raised on mortgage fees. That was grand, and that's knowing, that was relationship building that we made along the way, to be able to call up our commissioner, our representatives, and senators, and tell them that we were in dire straits and our docks were falling apart. That's relationships that we made along the way, and them understanding their needs of our harbor. And that's, that's how things get done. I wanna make that really clear. And the other thing that I would do for our harbor report tonight is that, again, we've worked hard and long working on this ordinance. So what we're ready to do tonight, uh, we've worked with the city staff, and put a lot of hours into it, and there might be a few little shifts, a little, um, corrections we might need to make, but I think I'm happy with what we've come up with. And for the new, um, people on, that are new, I'd be happy on, um, city council to sit down with you and kind of take, do reflection on where we, up to where we are now, um, as far as harbor fees, um, boat mortgage fees and so forth. And I, I think that would help that we have a bigger picture looking at things. Uh, that's my own report, thanks.
Thanks, Liz. Thank you so much, and thank you, Jack, both. Our harbors are beautiful, and it was, we need to have them to put that together.
I, I think we should make note that Homer said we were not on, send your hand for a lot.
No.
He said he, he got his 25 million, so we're gonna have to wait. Charlie Chink, of course, he's.
Any questions? We didn't have any questions for harbor. Oh, planning commission, was anybody from planning this evening? No. Uh, Parks and Rec, I don't think I see anybody from Parks and Recs. And our salmon enhancement committee, right up on.
Howdy, everyone. Val Robinson, um, the salmon enhancement commission. We met last week shortly before we lost power.
Oh, my.
Uh, yeah, I know, uh, 2025, I was on the town, uh, um, in our meeting, we elected a new chair, which is me. We elected a new vice chair, which is me, um. We also discussed some operational, uh, changes at the hatchery, some infrastructural improvements that we need to make, um, just like very small, tinkering and tailoring to do to things. Um, we also are in the process of now looking at our ordinance, looking at where our programming aligns with our ordinance, um, and also looking at where our ordinance matches up with, uh, what we think that we should actually be doing. So, we're gonna be doing some tailoring of that, looking to bring things up to 2025. Um, so that's what the meeting, like, consisted of. Up at the hatchery, we have, um, been hauling buckets of fry up into the floating net pen. All of them have hatched, all the eggs have hatched, uh, most of them have what we call buttoned up. So their little yolk sac that they have on their bellies that feeds them for the first portion of their life, that's gonna absorb. So, um, moving them into the floating net pen from the hatch boxes, starting to feed them, we do wanna make sure that we are in, uh, agreement with city ordinances around feeding wild animals with our operations on that, so if you get some clarity on that this evening, that would be helpful. Um, so that's where things are at. The hatchery, last week I was in, and at the Oregon Fishery Society conference.
Yeah.
Um, got to attend some really cool talks about hatchery production, perceptions of hatchery fish versus wild fish, um, and, uh, do some relationship building with folks across the state, so. That's me. That's what we're been up to. Um, any questions?
Any questions for what? Thank you for stepping up. I really appreciate your thinking within this holiday, and looking forward to, uh, changes. You have ideas, implementations, and?
Yeah, um, then, logistically, how do we get clarification and alignment with city ordinances against feeding wild animals?
They're not technically wild, are they? I mean, they're being tended, aren't. It's not like an animal that we're supervising.
Yeah, they're technically not, aren't, to be precise. And that is a great question. There was actually a research project at the conference looking at perceptions of how do you define wild in the terms of wild fish, and it turns out there is a spectrum of responses there, there's really no, that would be very answered, so.
Next question on the dock. We need to update ordinances. I'm not sure we can classify salmon as a wild animal from the standpoint of our ordinance that was adopted recently against feeding wild animals, but I will confirm.
That's a good question.
You reference person isn't gonna be feeding this.
Right.
If the wild animals were, kind of, we could just, and salmon, dragons.
I mean, we have, I'm sure, small K through 12 children up there.
Right, no, I mean, it's just like some citizens not gonna throw out their leftovers to feed your, well.
Well, we just, we just have to look and make sure the order we ordinance itself is, right, to be considered, so.
Yeah, just make sure we've got that in the rules.
We can just say accepting this, this animal.
No, we have, we have to look at the ordinance and then amend it.
Alright, I'll talk with Kim.
Okay, thank, uh, can I just quickly update some of the parks recreation?
Yeah, so, um, so what they've been doing is working diligently about product preparations. That's been our primary focus. That's coming up really fast when we think about it, and, uh, it's coming up really fast. But, um, the Parks and Recreation Commission volunteers have been, um, working with a core group of volunteers, number of, from citizens. They have their last meeting was on February 26th. We should have a firearm test coming out pretty soon. Um, Kathy's been heavily involved in that, um, but she's definitely had help from the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I think she's always here tonight, so it's definitely, it's also been, uh, awesome. So that's what they're primarily working on right now.
Lots of other, lots of other great, kind of, examples over the years, so. Okay, thank you, Kim. Um, are there public comments this evening? Yes.
Good evening, councilors, and, uh, Mayor, Bill Masella. And I, uh, would just like to make a few comments about the workshop that I just listened to, and the use fee, tax, whatever we're, we're gonna call that in, uh, for harbor use. Um, this idea has been kicked around in the city for quite some time. You know, I, it started back, um, when we first moved here and I sat on the financial advisory committee. And the challenge, obviously, um, from a budget standpoint, is how do we pay for all of the services that are, that are being used in the harbor? And what I heard was that there's a, and I haven't looked at the documents, but I've heard there's an $85,000 deficit for this year that we're planning to try to cover. And so, whether it's, and I would agree with, with Eva, I don't think we should go about the tax side of this thing. I think the use fee is a, is a much better approach for the council to look at for the harbor. And, um, you know, no, nobody wants to pay more. That's, that's just the standard. Nobody, nobody, you know, we were proposed to the citizens of the city that, you know what, you need to pay us a levy of X number of dollars. The pitchforks are gonna come out, and so, um, we've, we always need to be cognizant that, um, we, as a city, have a significant amount of people that are here as tourists. And the tourists are the biggest impact on our city and our infrastructure, and as a lodging operator, I find it extremely unfair that, um, we in lodging are hit with a 13.5% tax for every overnight stay. And, um, there's discussion now in, in some cities that they're gonna raise it to 15%. And so the impact of those increased fees as a business, I understand, when we raise the tax to 12% here on lodging, it impacted our business. We lost revenue, and the only way that we could keep our business occupancy the same way was to reduce our daily rates. So, the tax goes up, the daily rates go down, and the business makes less money. So, um, the concept of taxing as a business owner, I get it, and we need to try to stay away from taxing as a quote-unquote percentage of something. And so, a use fee is a common way that places all over the United States, you know, I think even Oregon Parks has a use fee. They do a use fee if you wanna go to use their parking lot and go on a hike at, uh, Drift Creek Falls, for example. So, having a use fee in place to use the, the harbor, I think, would be an appropriate use. The citizens are not impacted unless they choose to go on a whale watch or a charter fishing trip or something like that. The captains would not be impacted. Therefore, we're not asking them to pay an additional fee for their mortgage to, they don't have to come up with, how are they gonna pay for it, and figure out how much they need to charge now that the fees have gone up, we have to charge their guests. Uh, I think the use fee is the simplest way to accomplish that. And, um, in, in lodging, we do it all the time. You have your base rate, you have a line item that is a use fee. It might be, in our case, a cleaning fee, it might be an insurance fee, it might be an environmental impact fee, whatever that is. It's just an additional line item, and so you got rent plus a dollar to use the dock, or you, whatever it is. And, um, there's always this concern about, well, how are we gonna audit? And I don't wanna open up my books to everybody, the real. The reality of an audit for a revenue stream is you show them what your revenue is and you show them that you paid. You don't, nobody sees what your expenses are. They're not looking at, did you make money? Did you not make money? How much overdraw are your owners taking? They're looking at, you collected how much? And did you pay what you needed to be paid? And so I'm in favor of doing a use fee at the harbor. I think that a dollar use fee would be an appropriate amount. I think that the booking agents would be able to collect that as an additional line item. And I believe that from the standpoint of diversifying the amount of revenue that this city has, we are so reliant right now on transient lodging taxes that if anything were to happen to transient lodging, and I will just tell you, transient lodging is down from previous years. That, that means the city's revenue is down from previous years. And so when we have to come up with an eighty-five thousand dollar deficit and revenue is potentially down on transient lodging taxes, unless you increase the number of rentals, I, I just think that the city needs to look at it and keep in mind that a use fee is probably a better way to go than tax. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Yes, come on up.
This is kind of an interesting meeting. I'm not here to cause any trouble, but I heard a comment. That the harbor commission wasn't the appropriate place to do this kind of thing. And that's, I think, exactly why when you're making these kind of decisions, your harbor commission are made up of people that know the harbor inside out, know the relationships. So turning it over to them seems like an appropriate thing to do. And it isn't, you're shirking your duty. It's actually doing what you've got as a subcommittee to give you the information. And one of the things that I noticed none of you said was people pay, said, oh, we're the same as everybody else. No, you're not. You're not even close. If you're a thirty-five foot vessel or less and you're not heavy five or less, historically, you haven't been able to stay here because of the surge. And the surge hasn't changed in this bay. You may have built new docks, it may be better, but we won't know for a year before we, whether a boat can stay here with thirty-five feet long and, or thirty feet long or under that's aluminum, which is most of the smaller boats today. So time will tell whether this is a year-round port. But in reality, this is not a year-round port. Your shallow bar, in Newport, you can get out in a twelve-foot swell. Here, you can get out in a six-foot swell, seven-foot swell. Charter boats got to look around at eight foot. And I was running out of gear in seven-foot swell. I'd be scared to death because it gets real bad in this port. For Newport, I can go, come and go up to a ten-foot swell with a smaller boat. So it's, it's not apples and oranges when you're saying equivalent ports. I leave for six months a year, not because I want to, but because it's a safer harbor to be in. When I used to have a small boat to call out in the winter, that was easy. But now it's a bigger boat, so I stay in the water. So I just want to let you know, depot bay is not the things that you heard. It's a great harbor. It's a great place to fish out in the summertime. But this is a miserable, dangerous place to be. And only experts like the charter fleet are capable of making that trip. I wouldn't want to be agreeing like that with you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I know that I know who you.
Oh, I'm very confident.
Would you sign in, please?
Please, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could lay a introduction for people who don't know. Kerry is our former four-time state record representative.
Three-time, I was three.
Three-time state representative.
I was circling it out, it was only ten.
Four-time county commissioner.
Yeah.
Uh, so thank you, we're grateful for your.
There's a lot of improvements to the port. I was fortunate enough to be able to bring to depot bay. But I had to do it, I think, to a very harbor.
And we absolutely got you on our.
Yeah. Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you. All righty. Was there any other public comments? Before he goes on, um, while he's coming in, sign up. I just want to make sure everybody sees this. This was a public comment submitted. Um, you should all have a copy that should have been provided tonight. Um, in your many stacks, if you don't have it, I do want to make sure that you all get it.
Okay.
So.
I did see it.
Okay. But I just want to make sure that you all get it.
Okay, thank you.
It's me, Vaughn Robinson again. Um, I appreciated listening in on the workshop earlier. And I do appreciate folks looking to, uh, think through how the city can support itself. I heard, um, one thing that I haven't heard, I think, that should be considered is the numerous research enterprises that occur in depot bay. We have some mega long-term, multimillion dollar research projects, um, that occur within the city. And I think that, um, it might be worth pursuing how those projects can either benefit our city and our knowledge base or our financial base as well, so.
Are you talking about Noah?
Nope, I'm not talking about Noah. I'm talking about, for example, Suzanne Brander and the Scrammets Micro Plastics Project. Are you familiar with that one?
Yes.
Are you familiar with Bruce Le, uh, Bruce Manke and Jane Luchenko's Typhoon Project?
No.
Nope.
Not in depot bay, they're further north than oil bay.
Um, Kerry, or, uh, Lee Torres's, um, Green Whale Project. The Oregon Marine Reserves and the Research Data Center. So.
Okay, thank you. All righty, and we're going to, um, Cindy.
Sorry, I can't hear you right now.
Okay, and Cindy's applying for the budget committee.
Yeah. I'm Cindy Chupo. Citizen here in depot bay. And I plan to stay here and retire till end of my days. So I'm thankful and I want to do service in whatever way I can be. And I was an employee in that position, so. I had, uh, I'm not a finance, like a CPA or accountant or anything, but I have run my own business. I have health management in a hospital setting. I have my, um, I have help in my husband's business. Where he was, did furniture restoration repair. And so, um, I do know something about money that I can look at. I've been on volunteer committees and bound down campus, mostly because that's where I've lived for forty-three years. And so I've served in many different areas there. So I just want to put many of my skills, talents, or abilities to use here.
Good. Um, when, I just have one question for you, and that is, um, when you were ready for mayor, you ran on the annual taxes basis. What, uh, forms of new revenue do you recommend for the city?
Well, I've been listening to what's already being looked at. And, um, those are some avenues where you can look at, um, that I, some of the usage fee, I like that suggestion. And I have not actually done a lot of my decisions. I like to listen to what other people have to say because I think they know the area better than me. And I think that, uh, that's important, that I listen to what other people want to say, not just come up with just my idea. And so, thank you.
So you don't have any revenue sources that you research it?
I have no magic revenue, not at this time. But that doesn't mean I will hear something and of course I will share it when I do. Okay?
Other questions? Any other questions for Cindy? Okay, go ahead and take a seat and we'll, uh, we have ballots here.
Um, Councilor Watson is just, is what I've done about, she's.
Okay.
Could you pass this on again to the emcee?
Sure. This one doesn't. Oh, I, I think it says no, but I'm not sure. Would you just verify, take a calendar and ask, ask, please? I'm just not what shirt says. I think it's a vote, but I'm not sure what it is. Sorry. Apparently, I can't read English. Just clarify which one it is, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Six yeses, one no.
All righty, and does that include?
I counted all votes, six yeses and one no.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question about this procedure? Uh, why is it that we vote in secret, with secret ballot?
I believe it's part of the charter and according to council rules that you guys.
Council relax.
Okay, thank you.
And, okay, is there a motion to accept the ballots as presented?
Our motion to accept the ballots is presented, Mayor.
I second. As to who to second to accept the ballot, is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome aboard, Cindy.
Thank you.
And, um, Councilor Watson said aye. Okay. All righty, um, hi, Commissioner Chris. Are you on board with this, Chris? Unmute. Little louder, we need unmute.
Can't hear you.
I'll mute it here.
Louder.
I'm asked her to unmute, apparently I can't unmute her. I have to ask her to unmute.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, there I am. It was asking me to, it was asking me to sign in and some weird thing. I was like, what is that? Thank you for the opportunity, um, to come before you. You probably have a copy of my short resume. And, um, I'll just to briefly summarize, I've been a, uh, resident, uh, I started back in nineteen eighty in Newport and have lived in Newport, South Beach, Toledo. Raised my kids, they went to Newport High School. I've been a roll tour since, um, two thousand eight, um, primarily in Lincoln County. At this point, I, uh, spent a lot of my time over in, um, southwest Idaho, where I am week. But I own a condo just down the street from, um, City Hall and, um, had the opportunity, there was a position open. I thought, you know, I, I was looking for a way to, uh, help in, uh, a community that I'd never really been a part of before. I've worked in different things over in Toledo and of course Newport and thought this might be something that, um, I would enjoy doing and participating at this level, at a community level, um, on the planning. And being a roll tour, I've had, uh, some experience, uh, working with Lincoln County planning, um, on, uh, as looking at zoning and things like that, uh, for more clients and things like that. So, anyway, I thank you for the opportunity to just share a little bit about me.
Oh, thank you, thank you for stepping up for, um, this was a really hard committee to serve on. Um, just a quick question, are you here enough hours to be able to attend our meetings? And that type of thing?
Yes, I, I, um, this last year, I was most of the time in, uh, Lincoln County. Um, I came over to work on my taxes, uh, the last couple of weeks, and I'm coming back, um, on Monday. So, um, primarily, most of my work is for, for my, uh, my position in real estate is in Lincoln County.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, please. Um, Chris, so you will be able to be, um, physically present at the planning commission meetings?
Yes, yes, and I believe the next meeting is next Wednesday, correct? And I'm planning to be there.
Okay. Want to call? Any other private questions, please? All righty, you've got ballots here.
Seven of yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the ballots as presented?
How was that? Is there a second?
Second.
They moved a second to accept the ballots, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, Councilor Watson voted aye. Okay, so, uh, we'll see you on Wednesday night. And thank you, Chris.
Yes.
All righty.
Thank you.
Take care. Uh, neighbors for kids, is Toby here? No, he wasn't here last time, so you guys want to head.
Okay.
He needs to use the park for the Easter egg hunt, the annual Easter egg hunt. Is there a motion to accept his application for the use of the park, um, if I like to?
I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Okay.
It's going to move to second to accept the application for neighbors for kids for their Easter egg hunt annually. Um, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, and Vaughn Watson was also aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have the, uh, lease agreement with Robeson. And has everyone on the chest or you? I don't believe there was any changes when, when I was reading it.
I, that is entirely at the be counsel. Um, it's presented as a draft only, uh, to see if their counsel is wishing to, uh, offering terms, changes to terms and conditions. Then I will reach out to, um, Robeson Brothers and find out if they want to make any changes. And then if they do, we'll go back to you, otherwise, that's not good.
I had a question here.
Yes.
I wasn't clear on the, um, length of the lease. It, um, one place it says three years and another, so it looks like this is an interim until we have our own, um, restrooms built. So, um, I wasn't sure how we were going to structure it. I think, you know, if you want. Well, um, it seemed, I don't think, within a year, we'll probably, hopefully within a year, we'll have them. But is there a penalty if, um, we, um, cancel the lease or should we just enter into a lease for a year and have a redundant restroom required?
I believe the lease provides with a ninety-day or a hundred-day notice to extend if we don't have language in there regarding termination from either side with a notice and a, I say.
We didn't see it, but I could have.
We didn't certainly have that to just say term, uh, notice of at least, you can propose a number and then the leaseholder, or leaseholders can propose a counter, correct?
Yeah, I think, um, ninety days is probably appropriate.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor, I, I missed a part about the new restrooms. Can somebody fill us in about this?
Uh, the number of council meetings, the count that has been discussed with the idea, in fact, it was purchased last year, a couple modular restrooms, that the idea has been in by the harbor office. Additional restrooms, yes.
And, and we're talking about installing, uh, lines for plumbing?
Lines and plumbing are, yeah.
Do we have, how are we paying, is there a budget estimate on this?
We've already purchased the modular restrooms. Nothing more has been added to the budget to discuss what we're buying for this then.
We don't know what it's going to cost to put these in?
We already have the modular restroom. Our guys will install them. We just need to get a building permit if we decide to go, continue to go this route. Which the trigger hasn't been pulled yet partially in, partially because we have a brand new. We are in the middle of the dock. We, um, so we're going to come back to the council at some point and say, okay, well, we're ready to pull this and this is what it.
I just have a couple, maybe one more question. How much do we pay for the modular?
I don't have that under impression because I didn't know that would be a question I was asked.
It seems to me we should know what the, what the cost is of this versus.
Well, we did at the time, we were talking about it. We just delayed installing because there was a whole construction project going on. And this is not about us putting in new restrooms, this is about lease. With.
I understand.
Right. So I wouldn't have known or thought to bring information about the modular restrooms. So if going back to the ninety days, I see that it's part of the renewal options, but not canceling. You can, that's, that's why I presented to you all first as a draft, so you can make, um, suggestions and comments, but it still will have to go back to the leaseholder for them to decide what they want to do.
Yep.
We started early because this one expires on April fifteenth.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the draft review? As presented?
With, with the change of. Putting in language regarding early termination?
And I was thinking we should do it just a year's lease, but I, I would have.
If it is just a year's lease, and if we, for some reason, those don't get installed, we would have to go back in the end of the year and go through it.
Is there an option for the law?
Yeah, it's just, uh, there is an option for renewal already in.
Ninety, ninety days notification, or ninety twenty, they're both different.
But it seems that, um, it just would give more certainty to the, uh, resort if they knew what our plans were.
Well, just, just also keep in mind, though, that this lease starts August first. It doesn't start April fifteenth, it's the way they structured the lease, which I, at some point, we really like to fix to be consistent, but that's just the way they did that.
Can I ask one more question about this? Who are these, uh, units being explored right now?
Raise your hand.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Somebody made a motion.
Not yet, no. We don't have a motion.
Somebody did make a motion with the, with the changes.
Right, I thought somebody did too.
But, so I didn't, um, did you make a motion?
No.
I'll make the, uh, somebody did, somebody.
No, we, we don't have a motion.
Okay. I'll make the motion to accept the, uh, the draft lease agreement with the changes noted, and to present to the lease, the resort.
Correct, okay.
On second.
It's been, um, moved a second to accept the draft renewal as presented, with the changes noted. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, okay.
But, the draft. And just so you know, the, the plan is to make these provisions send, um, the Robison Brothers a draft, and in which case they will fill out and make any changes they propose, and then I'll bring it back to you. I don't know how long it will take, but as soon as I know, I'll bring it back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Um, we have a audit report, um, and I reviewed it, and. It's something that I think at this point in time, we just need to accept it because we need to move on and, uh, get our CPA, um, going on the next, uh, round of auditing for, so. Are there any questions on the audit report?
Mayor, I would agree with you completely, I, I, I'm, I'm glad we're doing this, but I'm also disturbed by the fact that we've got four audits beyond this to finish, without a last year's audit sitting in front of us, instead of a four or five year old audit, we still don't know where to grab, that's kind of the problem.
Okay. So is there any other comments? At this point, um, I'll undertake an audit, um, motion to accept the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit as submitted, and to finalize it.
I'll move to, uh, accept the, uh, twenty twenty, this is the nineteen twenty?
Twenty.
This is the twen-
Yeah, nineteen and twenty.
Nineteen twenty, uh, financial statements and audit.
Is there a second? I'll say it. It's been moved to second to accept the draft report, and this is from Isar, as submitted, uh, nineteen twenty and twenty twenty. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Council Watson voted aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll get that off to Paul tomorrow.
I'll, I'll let him know that it was, if it was approved, and then once he sends me back a final version, I will file it with the Secretary of State.
Thank you, Karen.
The auditing, never mind auditing, fine Secretary of State, although, one of us, we get it.
Okay, uh, we have a, an ordinance before us for the harbor regulations that the harbor commission has been working hard on, and so is Kim to put, uh, all of this together, so I will open up, uh, ordinance number twenty five, I need to.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. One thirty-two, is it one thirty-two?
Thank you.
Subsection one thirty-two.
Yeah, get it on. Sorry, it's been a long day. Okay, we've got an ordinance number XX.
Oh, there's, um, anyone want the ordinance number, I can get that to you.
Oh, okay.
Um, it is, um, two, three five six dash twenty-five.
Three five six dash twenty-five, okay. An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number three four zero dash twenty-three, chapter ninety-two, the city of depot bay harbor ordinance, is there a motion to accept reading this, uh, ordinance number three five six dash twenty-five by title only?
Your Honor, I would move that we, uh, read by title only, only the, uh, ordinance of repealing and replacing ordinance number three four zero dash two-three.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
I'll say it.
It's been moved to second to accept reading ordinance number three five six dash twenty-five by title only. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, this is an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number three four zero dash twenty-three, chapter ninety-two, the city of depot bay harbor ordinance. Um, do we read for the second reading now, too?
Um, the staff report indicated that this should be adopted tonight, if it doesn't all go through the whole process, as I noted, um, on step one to agree for the motion as a staff report, we'll have to come back. And no crab pots allowed on the docks after that, so I don't think we want to do that.
Okay, so is there a, uh, motion to accept reading the second reading of title three five six dash twenty-five by title only?
Your Honor, I move that we, uh, read by title only the ordinance we questioned.
Is there a second? Uh, Council Watson seconded, oh, she did, okay, yes, it's been moved to second to accept reading ordinance number three five six dash twenty-five by title only, and order, ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number three four zero dash twenty-three, chapter ninety-two, city of depot bay harbor ordinance. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I'll open for discussion, uh, this, changes that are being, um, approved in this draft.
I have a question, uh, my question deals with the hours of operation and self fueling. Uh, how does the self fueling work, and why are we self fueling as opposed to, uh, the harbor master and his assistant fueling vessel?
This has come up because we have boat owners, uh, bringing their own fuel, a couple of them are, uh, the bigger boats, so they're using large tanks of fuel, and there's some concerns expressed regarding the safety and spill of fuel prevention control. So, um, our insurance agent has recommended that we put steps in a process to allow this, to make sure that all of the insurance requirements, and that all the training on spill prevention and control has been entered. So we're going through a, what I would propose is a non, we don't have to charge anybody to get a permit, but the purpose of it is to know who's doing it, how much, making sure they have the right insurance, and then make sure they are trained on what happens if there is a spill, and how to adjust that.
So is this an auto pay system, where you stick your card in and get your gas?
No, this is them fueling their own tanks.
Oh, just fueling from the back of the vehicle?
Yes, yes, no, our fuel dock will still continue to fuel, but we have at least three, but we could end it with more, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I only have one part on wording, it's page one forty-one, in the crab pot C subsection I and subsection II. It says, when the vessel is not in use for whale watching, or when the vessel is in use for whale watching. I think that that wording, based on discussions at harbor commission meetings, is, should be kind of reworded to something like, when the vessel is at sea, and when the vessel is at sea and not crabbing. I think it limits crab pot storage to only when the boat is whale watching, and when, uh, boats do more than just whale watch, that don't involve crab pots. Memorial services, ashes at sea, um, as Vaughn mentioned earlier, the Oregon State Marine Reserve program has several tribes that participate in that, and they're out for, you know, eight to ten hours doing research in the state, not crabbing. I just think it should be clarified, it was verbally clarified, I think, that a lot of harbor commissions, it was basically like, the boat is not crabbing, they can be on the docks, so that's it, otherwise, they're supposed to be on the boat. Um, that would be my only observation, I'd be the expert with the harbor commission actually.
So, I remember Chad and all of us having the discussion that the only time that there'd be crab pots on the dock is when the vessel was not in, um, was, because we were told it was for a quick turnaround. That's why we have to have crab pots allowed on the dock, because, um, they go from fishing to whale watching, and, and it would only be from, you know, a few hours from there. So now what I'm hearing, and this was not brought up at the harbor commission, um, this wording about just during, during whale watching, it was, it wasn't brought up by Dan Zimmerman, who's on the harbor commission, or Bay Eagle or Tyler were there. So, I understand that people want to keep crab pots on the dock, like if they don't sell all their crab, you know, crab trips, or for the other purposes, but that's not what we had discussed, so, um, this, uh, these are new docks, and, um, I'm really hoping that at our next meeting, we can incorporate, uh, crab pot storage fee, and especially if it's going to be even longer time, I think we really have to, I mean, we are providing a service, and especially if it's only, you know, now that it's not going to be just from, you know, twelve to four, it's now going to be from, you know, three AM or six AM in the morning until six PM at night, or whatever it might be. And so, that is not what we had discussed, and I understand that people want to have it for convenience, but, um, this is not what had been discussed, and it wasn't discussed at the harbor commission at all.
I remember Chad repeatedly saying when the vessel is whale watching or if it is fishing but not crabbing. And on the audio, he, maybe in the notes, it doesn't reflect that, but in the audio it does. Um, I mean, it, it just, it makes more sense if the vessel was at sea and not crabbing. I mean, are we supposed to have crab pots on boats when someone's trying to spread the ashes of their loved ones? That's, you know, I, I think that with all the work and everything that's been done, the original draft said, when the vessel is in use, I E, whale watching, which means, for example.
No, I believe that is, E G means, for example.
Right, but it said whale watching, et cetera, so this, we need to just change it to, when the vessel is at sea and not crabbing, that covers the et cetera.
Mayor, if I could just interject, to me, my concern about this whole issue of storage on the docks has always been, uh, was, was, was it sound engineering, could it be done? And, and the engineers came back and said, yes, so those crab pots can safely, uh, go on the docks. But I also see, uh, that this is another enterprise here, it's storage. And, uh, I know that in the Newport, uh, or Newport rates, that, uh, they charge for the storage of crab pots, and I think we should probably do that. And, uh, and then that would answer Counselor Poling's idea about, uh, building, you know, we need to start taking care of these docks now, we need as much revenue as we can generate off of them that's fair and reasonable, and that would be one way to do it.
Okay, um, what is Counselor's opinions? Do we want to change the language to when the vessel is?
That's a little more clear.
I can make a brief, if I can, as well. Counselor, it's not.
Yeah, so it, it would say, so when the whale, when the, so I don't know.
When the vessel is in use for whale watching or other ocean activities?
So, under what? C subsection I, when the vessel is not in use for whale watching, that would, that would be replaced
Okay.
with, when the vessel is not at sea, because that would only be in the harbor. Under II, it would say, instead of when the vessel is in use for whale watching, it would say, when the vessel is at sea and not crabbing.
I would, yeah. Okay. That was what, in the body of the email you sent here, I read.
Yes.
I have to try right all the time.
Yes.
Thank you. Were there any other suggestions, questions on that? Is there a motion to accept, um, ordinance three five six dash twenty-five as submitted?
Pardon me, could we please clarify the language and make adopt? That's the legal question.
Oh, I know, oh.
The question need to add the emergency permission, that it being adopted on the new emergency permission. Under emergency.
Okay.
That's in motion number three.
Oh, what if I do, want me to make the motion? Yes, please. I move to adopt ordinance three five six dash twenty-five with the emergency provision, making it have to be a on passage.
With the changes in the language.
The changes.
And what are those changes?
The crab pots, or the crab pots.
When the vessel is at sea and when the vessel is not at sea. So you have a discussion?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it back.
Okay, now, is there any further discussion? Okay, can, can you call the board?
Can. Um. Counselor Beasley?
Aye.
I think it started with Counselor Watson, she voted aye, Counselor Watson. Um, Counselor Poling?
Aye.
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Counselor Sovereign?
Aye.
Um, I'm sorry, Counselor Ray?
Aye.
And, yeah, I got everybody, uh, Counselor Herman, I got you, Ray?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, one thing I'd like to.
I, pardon me, I should have asked, we should have asked, did you, this technically should have received public comment.
Oh.
So I don't know if any public here wants to talk? On this matter?
It's not, not good.
Good?
I'm good.
Very good, okay.
Are we good? So I want to open the floor real, real quick, um, you know, we do, um, man this fuel station, and now that this ordinance has passed, um, self fueling is taking over by docks, do we want to consider closing, providing fuel at the docks? What did that?
As a budget saving measure, I, I don't know, I haven't talked with anybody, but, um.
What, if, yeah, if you later, do not continue with what we're doing now, or we provide a manpower to give to you?
So we will.
So you will say it.
Liz.
I, I was just bringing up a question on, now the ordinance is.
I, I was just bringing up a question on, now the ordinance is, um.
So you're saying, Mara, that we should eliminate fueling altogether and let everybody do the self-serve from, you know?
Yeah.
And Beasley, is that self-serve, is people are buying their own fuel and providing their own tanks and bringing it down to the docks?
Well, see, we, you know, I, I, okay, this is the first I've heard of that. And I'd really like to know a little bit more about that before we even move, like how many people are doing it? Like I can recall when Carson Oil would come down and they lay the lines down and fueled that way. But, you know, we've got this, I put, we've got this wonderful facility here.
When we lose money at it, we cannot buy the full fuel at a cost that these folks are able to afford. And we're also not able to get, um, staffing to fuel it. And those, that, where the fuel docking is, is completely filled with silk. So our, our chargers have got to fill up during high tide. And that's, we have to always find personnel available for that. So there's a lot of things and as a cost-saving measure, if we're going to allow self-fueling, is it cost-effective for us to continue to provide fuel at all?
I'm just, I was going to.
Daniel.
So do, um, do the self-fuelers pay a fee for this to our dock?
No. Well, but they have to their, um, through their.
Their mortgage.
Mortgage, yeah, yeah. I'm just opening it up as a form of consideration for us to look at.
I think it would be a good thing for the Harbor Commission.
Absolutely, yeah, you know, and, yeah.
If we could give some facts and figures, like when, when we say we're charging more than our vessels can afford.
Well, we have to be if they're doing their self-fueling.
Well, I don't know if that's the case or not, and I'd like to see what they're paying and what self, you know, and, and, and in terms of this. I, this is a facility that I was here when that thing went in, you were here when it went in. Uh, we, a lot of money has been invested in that. It's a great facility, it's one of the services that we offer.
But we can't staff it and no, and the.
But we have staff.
And, but they're, that's where the R85K deficit comes from.
Right.
We, our staff are not, we're not getting enough time for the services we provide.
Right.
Two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars so far this year in the budget.
So are we gonna, are we gonna eliminate the assistant harbor master that, that?
We already have, we haven't had assistant harbor master for a long time.
It's just one person down there now, no part-time worker.
And we tried to hire a seasonal, but we were unable to hire one. We did have one partially, but then we decided on maintenance.
So we're, and we can't charge enough money to, uh, to pay for the cost of the operation.
We, we get constant complaints about how much our diesel, we charge for diesel based on what they can buy elsewhere.
Well, what, what's the difference, what's the actual difference?
And see, the cost and complaint. I don't know, because I have heard this set on to me from a harbor master.
Well, we need to, we need to have these things before we can get to.
You've heard it as well, right?
Yeah, I'm a point. Or is that what, ask one question, but not, I mean, sort of, um, so there's one person staffed down there now, right? So this 23, 24 budget that was provided to us, it says under payable was two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Does one person owe you that?
That is not what one person's owing, but that is all the distributing benefits that go along with that plus.
For one.
No, there is also pieces, like sometimes during the summer, they do have to, because our harbor master can't be down there 24/7. So they do have to send, so we take part of his crew time and apply to part.
Okay.
So it's not, that, it's a good question, because I kept looking at that number thinking, man, I don't even make that much. But no, it's the pieces from everybody who has, we charge some of his time against it, we charge some of my time against it. Plus.
Plus.
Yeah, plus all of the insurance and benefits, so. Jack?
Mary?
Yeah?
Thank you. Jack O'Brien, Harbor Commission, um, this, this kind of hit me kind of cold with that post, it's not right. I have a suggestion that, uh, they table this discussion and put it on the agenda.
They're not working.
Yeah, it was, if it's, then it's.
It's not working, it won't line up at all, so you're fine, go.
Oh, my bad. Oh, yeah. Um, if this be tabled and brought up as an agenda item for.
Harbor, yes, yeah.
And, and also, if you want the Harbor Commission to say something on it, then we need to get it on our agenda as well.
Yes, I totally agree, yeah. I just wanted to bring it up as an item to consider. Um, so we'll get that going. HB 3587 is a Senate bill or House bill, um, that Rocky Habitat support is being proposed and, I think, Dennis, are you here, Mets capacity this evening?
I'm very supportive, I think the Mets are almost ready to do that, I'm doing it, so I'm happy to.
Yes, yes.
How many do I have to do now?
Sure.
So Pennsly with Friends of Otter Rock Marine Reserve. I would remind the council, thank the council for approving, the history of this is that, uh, the council gave approval for, um, a proposal of new, uh, marine conservation areas along the coast. And that succeeded, and it only took three years. But that's a state bureaucracy, basically, um, and so this bill, uh, would actually allow enactment of that to support it, uh, over time, so it's, um, uh, come to the point of there are eight, now eight marine conservation areas that are new. This bill would, uh, give money to Fish and Wildlife Commission, uh, to carry, carry out the, um, the mandate of that, of the plans that are, the planning process itself, but also the, uh, the results of that plan. Put people in place to, um, continue their marine reserve work, uh, research they're doing and also connect, I think, connect with the MCA. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but it's really, it will allow the, uh, Fish and Wildlife Commission to do its work, uh, to follow up on the evaluation after 10 years of operation for the marine reserves. It's basically, um, keeping them in business and also keeping the reserves, um, in business and, and, and continuing the research that goes there, and also connect with the community groups like ours, uh, who relate to Fish and Wildlife. I think that's.
So, so, um, just wanted to clarify a little bit.
Yes, yeah.
So this was a bill introduced by Representative Vaughn, um, and very much supported by the Conservation Committee. This is just for Rocky Habitat Coordinator, um, and, um, and it's a coordinator and, um, and support for the local community groups. This isn't, it's a part of the larger marine conservation area, but this is just for the Rocky Habitat, um, and the new, um, eight areas that were designated.
What does this mean for us specifically as a city?
Um, well, all in the near shore, all the little, all the rocky shore areas support things like eel grass that when our little fish come out of the, out of the streams, they're, they hide in the caliphine, the eel grass. And it's our tide pools that all the visitors go to, not necessarily Depot Bay, but the Rocky Shore up and down the coast, so. And we, uh, the city has supported, um, the Otter Rock Marine Reserve, where a lot of people marine garden there. And, um, Foley Creek is a designated area and, um, can perpetuate.
So do we have any responsibility?
No.
Because we're supporting this bill?
No, it's just really advocacy for, for the legislators to say that the city is in favor of allowing this to go forward.
Thank you.
I just got a copy of a letter today, the City of Camp Beach, uh, sent a letter similar to the one that you see in your package. I'll just send it to the body.
I think this guy's got people to know.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Mara, I, uh, I just, I would like to say something about this, in that, uh, if this creates a six hundred thousand dollars in the budget to support these operations, and if it, and if that means that, that we can get out of the, uh, the, the, the responsibility of subsidizing this operation that you have going, I'd be all for it. But that's not going to happen. We're going to support this program, they're going to continue to get state funds, and there's a lot of money behind Rocky Habitat and Marine Preserves in our state budget right now. What I don't want to see is Depot Bay spending money on projects that are outside our city limits. Uh, and if that, and if, and if supporting this would ensure that we no longer have to send five thousand dollars or whatever it is we're, we're, we're sending, that we can use that to help close the, the deficits in the, in the other budget areas we have. If we can add five thousand to our streets budget or five thousand to harbor budget instead of sending it to Otter Rock, I'm all for it. I'll sign it, I'll vote yes.
Uh, we don't get money from the state. Uh, we have, we rely on foundations and the, uh, generosity of, you know, local governmental agencies and other, other people around here. In fact, we even get some, um, money from some hotels who think that they want to be a kind traveler, uh, to support this operation. And I would remind the council that, um, Otter Rock is, uh, one of the most heavily visited sites on the entire coast. A million, almost a million visitors a year, that's more than the aquarium, it's more than the, uh, the Aquinita Head, it's more than, uh, how, F Field and all those, so. Those outside visitors contribute hundreds of millions of dollars to this economy on, on, in the mid-coast area, so. What we're doing is, is elevating their experience, uh, that when they come there, to be more excited about what they came for than when they came, and to be stewards of the area, so they're not fracturing and they're not, uh, you know, violating signs and this sort of thing. So we're on the forces, but the fact that we're there, you know, elevating their experience and generating a sense of stewardship, um, is, is what our role is.
Also, has I made point of clarification that we do not give them five thousand?
Yeah.
Give them free access.
We asked for five.
We did.
So is there a motion to, um, provide a letter of support to the Oregon Legislature, uh, in support of this HB 3587?
This is free money for everybody.
I'll make a motion to send a letter of support.
Is there a second?
Second, that.
It's been moved to second to, um, send a letter of support for the, uh, Rocky Habitat, uh, support. Is the discussion on the motion?
I think there's a draft for that, it's.
Yes, yeah. I'll put it online ahead of you.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I love Dennis, but I have to say no.
That's a lot of.
I was thinking about her.
Thank you, okay. Um, city staff reports, has everyone had a chance to sort of do what's going on in town here? Just like a black eye, that is not fair. So, Kim, is, I'm seeing this change order, do we need a motion to accept this change order?
I reviewed it at R2G, I purchased the news that we did recently, and as long as they don't go over five hundred thousand, if the project is budgeted, as long as it doesn't go over a hundred thousand, and I make sure they just, I'm just hoping to you for your review to see what they've got. Um, I, I was trying though today, we'll find out how much of that is true, but I was told today there was going to be one more change order for the harbor project, the electrician down there. We went to the harbor, um, ribbon cutting, we saw the work done for the, the fuel dock where they have, has a some collapsed pipe for the electrician, they were going to have to, um, go in and camera and fix it. Well, I've heard today that there isn't going to be a change order, the electricians are just doing it for us. So a lot of our guys helped by doing a lot of the clearing, they know the, we can tell what your guys did, they know that work. But, um, it sounds like they're not even going to charge us, but, so if they don't, our total change orders is about fifty-seven thousand on a four-point-three. Four-point-seven-dollar project, which is pretty bad.
That's amazing, that's amazing. So any questions on the staff report this evening? Okay. There was a survey, Jen, any questions on the survey?
I, uh, would like to say something about that. Question number one, I'm not familiar with this, but you have about a five percent return, is that a good return, you think?
Actually, we act, we get better than the other cities did. Uh, North Bend, uh, no, no, not up there. I think it was Mount Angel and Lake City, we can get better than Lake City.
Um, I noticed that, uh, the three most pressing challenges facing Depot Bay, speeding on Highway 101, deteriorating infrastructure, and too many short-term rentals. And I thought about that, the too many short-term rentals thing, is this is kind of a mantra all up and down the coast now. Anti-short-term rental thing, but, uh, I would, uh, kind of say that the reason for that being in the top three is that people don't understand how we are financed, at Depot Bay. If we wanted to get rid of short-term rentals, if we could help those, and let's get rid of all of them, uh, it would take a tax on every resident in this town of five hundred dollars a year to make up that loss. And so, uh, I'd like to see us, if there was any way possible in our public relations, to, uh, to promote the idea and, and be grateful for the fact that we have these short-term rentals, that, that, uh, we don't have to pay freight ourselves. I've heard it said so many times here, that citizens of this town are, are, are poor and, and, and affordable increases and, uh, water leaks and et cetera. But that's the, and, and with enough short-term rentals, we don't have to make them pay, we'll make the tourists pay. Thank you.
So where do we go with the results?
We, we have a meeting that I asked everybody to vote on Thursday, uh, that's Wednesday. It's Wednesday to discuss this, but, but that's the team presenting the office mind diagram. As of people's round robin.
Okay.
By the way, did you see where, uh, uh, elected officials came in, like second from the bottom, I think it was?
I did.
Well, I guess we're doing a good job if they're going to serve us, right?
I think they're not happy with us as well.
I, I do think one of the things we should talk about is, that was only five questions, was it five? I think we really should do another survey to get some more refinement on their concerns and why their concerns, because we didn't get a lot of associated comment. So there was an open spot for comment and we didn't get a lot of comment. Um, so I don't, I can make my own guesses as to what those results mean, but until we get some more context behind that, which means more information, we can't know for sure what that means.
Okay. Okay, um, closing public comments, do we have any closing public comments this evening? All righty, council comments? Nobody has council comments?
I was just, um, wanting to make sure that, um, the harbor lease stays on the city's. Yeah. Did I, did I not put it on there? I meant to. And then the other thing is, um, uh, trying to figure out a date for, uh, next Urban Reurl meeting.
Oh, okay.
And I don't remember if we had anything scheduled for the next, um.
Well, next week we have a executive session at five, at five.
Yeah, so maybe, um.
How long do you think that will take for the Urban Reurl?
Well, I, I think that we were wanting to look at our prior sessions, we need some, um, more information, I think, from staff. You had asked, actually, you had called volunteers and said you would come up with your top choices. Okay, so everything. Uh, you think you want to. Okay, so, um. And then I think he's supposed to revise them too. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, in April then?
I don't think that's enough time to, we need to start doing the budget in April. Since our first budget meeting.
At the end of this month.
End of this month?
Uh-huh. It's just a work session now, it's more like a, let's get going, introduce budget 101 for, we ask a lot of new members. And people that are not new members that could actually. And people that are not new members that could actually learn more. There's always a good opportunity to learn more about how budgeting works. I'm sorry.
What, what day was that work session?
Uh, the one that I was talking about, Jen, let me send you the budget calendar, I'm not, uh, because it has all of the dates on it, so.
Okay, that's right.
And just a reminder, even, I'd like you to put all the dates on your calendars, but we may not need them all. I'm hoping that I can make this go a lot smoother, and we don't need them all, but I want to make sure.
So the executive session's at five on the eighteenth?
Yeah, I was thinking that.
And it will probably run.
It'll be the whole time.
At, at least five to longer, because, um, Friday's at five.
No, 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 not on the eighteenth.
Oh, the eighteenth.
The one, Council?
Yeah, we are meeting before that.
No, we don't, wait a minute.
What, what is the executive session?
On the eleventh.
On the eleventh, oh, okay. So that's for our orange, correct, that later. Five o'clock on March eighteenth for the urban renewal?
Okay. Is that okay with everyone?
Five P M on the.
This is an old hand, so.
On the what day?
On the, um, eighteen.
The eighteen, okay.
I apologize for somehow dropping dock leases, but it's now back on my project updates.
And what is the, uh, when was the executive session?
On the eleventh, at five o'clock. Yeah, so could you see all of those dates are updated on the website? So you should, you should have it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Autumn, did you have any council comments? Okay, I believe we're done.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.